If you qualify for an absentee ballot, we have those available now. We offer both in-office or mail ballot service. Even people who live overseas can request an absentee ballot. Uniformed Overseas Citizen Absentee Voting Act, also known as UACAB, allows the electronic exchange of the ballot to and from the city clerk's office for all of the federal ballots that we may have during an election. The process is somewhat different, however, for municipal ballots. The law, state law, does not allow for an electronic exchange of a municipal ballot. So, we are only allowed to mail the ballot out to someone who requests one. But voters can submit electronically what's known as a federal write-in absentee ballot to cast their vote electronically for the special municipal election. If anyone wants more information about that, they should contact the city clerk's office. Early voting is planned for February 24th through February 28th during normal office hours. We're open 8:30 to 4:30 for casting your ballot with no excuse. You don't need to have those typical three reasons why you can't go to the polls on Election Day in order to vote early. And if we add evening hours, I'm talking with the mayor about that now, we'll be posting that on the city's website as well. I'm hoping to add at least one or two days during that week of February 28th. The annual street list was sent out last week, and we ask that people return it to us in a timely fashion so that we can be sure to update their census year. That's an important element when you go to the polls and we let you know that you're an inactive voter. It's probably likely because we haven't heard from you in any way, shape, or form about voting, and returning your street list is one way to stay on our rolls as an active voter. And lastly, dog licenses are now available, and I would encourage everyone to mail in their requests so that we can get a dog license back to you. That information about dog licensing is on the bottom of your street list form. The fee is $10 for a spayed or neutered pet, $20 otherwise, and the fee is waived for residents over 70 years old. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for those announcements. Next up is Stephen Callahan.
Hi, my name is Stevie Callahan, 24 Birch Street Road, and I spoke to you last, well, earlier, no, it was in January, last month, about frustration I had in trying to get contracts of city's business from the clerk's office. And I said that I didn't think, you know, it was appropriate. I was going to check to see whether it was legal. So, I did find out that Massachusetts General Law 41-17 requires that every contract that's exercised in the city be placed within the city clerk's office and recorded within one week, and that all contracts must be maintained in the city clerk's office and so that the public can go in and get a look at them. This apparently changed, at least according to a letter I asked the city clerk, about 39 months ago. 39 months ago, they stopped providing city contracts. This law was specifically developed for transparency so that anyone could see what was going on in the business. The fact that we have not had a law consistent with transparency in the past 39 months really worries me. I also just want to say that it deals with Birch Bar, and it's something that's been going on. The very first contract that I think fell behind that day was scheduled to be signed in October. That October date was scratched out in the body of the contract. It was signed in November, which just happens to coincide when the last record went down of contracts to the city council. There's one more contract out of Birch Bar that's scheduled to be signed, which they're selling four lots with an assessed value of around $36,000. These are the lots that the mayor said were going to be sold at market value to help support them. And those four lots being sold for $110,000 are $250,000 discount. And in the bench, they also directed that $45,000 of the city profit be sent to a third party. And I think that this is some of the reasons why these contracts are not available, although I did get a copy last week. I had hoped that it would be able to be on the council's agenda so it could be discussed and people have a chance to answer why this change occurred, who authorized it. It's no longer a question about whether it's legal. It's been a violation of the law for the past 39 months. Thank you.
Thank you. James Lowenthal.
Good evening, I'm James Lowenthal. I live at 181 Crescent Street here in Northampton. Those of you who read the New York Times, you would have seen on the front page just a couple of days ago, a picture of fireflies, everybody's favorite insect. They're in steep decline worldwide. The second major reason after habitat destruction is light pollution. Light pollution negatively affects every animal that's ever been studied. Experts agree light pollution is bad for wildlife. It's also bad for humans. We have experts right here at Smith College who study circadian rhythms. There's a world expert from Germany visiting all year, giving a series of talks, including one next week, on the profound ways in which humans are tied to the daily light and dark cycle of a 24-hour revolving birth, and how important light is to regulating that. Experts agree light pollution is bad for human health. Light pollution is getting worse and worse at a rate that is astonishingly fast, as much as 5% or even 10% per year increase right here in Massachusetts. What's the population growth? Zero. But light pollution continues to grow and grow. So, what do we do about it? Well, we actually have a statewide bill working its way through the legislative process right now. Every state in New England has passed legislation or regulation about light pollution, except Massachusetts. This bill will bring Massachusetts in line with the rest of other forward-thinking states in New England, and it's common sense. This bill will dictate that all state and municipally funded projects have to abide by certain common sense rules, such as a light shouldn't be too blue, because blue light's worse for your health and worse for the environment. And it shouldn't go off into the sky and side us, it should go down, because it's useful. These are normal, commonly accepted, common sense ideas. There's a misconception that this bill will require cities and towns to spend more money. That is not true. If the city's going to put in lights, it has to choose between good lights and bad light, that's all. It doesn't cost any more money to choose good lights. If the city's made a mistake, it doesn't have to correct it through this bill. There's no extra money required by municipalities as a result of this bill. I'm here to ask tonight that the city of Northampton will support this bill. We just passed a major hurdle yesterday. The bill was reported favorably out of the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy. This was a huge victory. It's now in ways and means, and I'm hoping that the city of Northampton will say, yeah, we think this bill is a good idea, and we support it. And I will follow up with my city councillor, Karen Foster. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone who's on the sheet, but if anyone else is free to speak now, if they'd like to. Nope. Okay, hearing no other public comment, we are going to start the meeting. Laura, will you call the roll?
Councillor Dwight.
Here.
Councillor Foster.
Here.
Councillor Jarrett.
Here.
Councillor LaBarge.
Round done.
Councillor Mayory.
Here.
Councillor Nash.
Here.
Councillor Quinnland.
Here.
Councillor Thor.
Here.
Okay. We do not have any public hearings today. I do not have any updates to committee chairs have any updates. None. We'll go into recognitions and one-minute announcements. I'll just start and say I think it's appropriate to recognize that Fire Chief Nichols has announced this week that he is retiring after 32 years of service to Northampton, his entire career serving Northampton, and he also comes from a family of people who have served in public safety in Northampton. So, we wish him a very happy, well-deserved retirement and thank him for his service and his leadership. I would say particularly in helping to shape the department into what now is fire rescue. So, congratulations, Chief Nichols. We will miss you. Any other announcements? Councillor Mayory?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that Florence Night Out is happening again this year. I believe it's the second year. This is a fantastic community event. My kids love this. That's when they close all the roads down in Florence Center. And it was such a thrill for them to be, you know, even just hanging out in the middle of the road with Art Chalk and their friends was fantastic. So, it's not too early to get involved. There's, you can be an underwriter, you can sponsor art spaces. If you're a local business, you can participate. We're looking for more food. And so, if you have any questions or would like to get involved, you can email Florence Night Out, that's one word, florencenightout@edward.com. And the event is June 6, 2020.
Excellent. Thank you. Councillor Quinnland?
I'd just like to invite everyone to join me Tuesday, February 25th, at 6:00 p.m. at Edwards Church for an event about the past, present, and future of public education. It's a conversation on public education when the world's on fire, a commemoration of the work of Jackson Street retiring principal Gwen Agnes, and hosted by Vijay Prashad, both Ward One residents, by the way. So, I hope you can join me.
Thank you. Other announcements? No. Your Honor, do you have any communications for us?
I just wanted to update folks on the status of the town hall meetings I've been holding around the community. I want to thank all the community members who've come out over the course of the last several weeks for the six that I've held so far. And there are two more that are scheduled right now, Wednesday, next Wednesday, February 12th at 7:00 p.m. at Ryan Road School in Ward Six. And then, on Monday, the 24th of February, in Ward Seven at Leeds Elementary School. So, we've got two more opportunities to come. There's, all the information that's presented at those town hall meetings are on the city's website, along with all the other information, like calculator, news stories, and other links to important information during the election. I also wanted to announce that next Wednesday, at 10:30 in the morning, at the Senior Center, we're going to be holding a special workshop. Northampton Assessor Joan Seraphin will be holding a workshop to talk about some of the many property tax relief programs that we offer for Northampton seniors and veterans. As the council may recall, back in December, when we brought forward the order to put forward the question on the March 3, 2020 ballot for Proposition Two and a Half override, we also brought forward several expansions of the existing tax programs for seniors. This is an opportunity for both seniors and veterans to come to the Senior Center to hear from Judge Seraphin and learn about the various programs and what their potential eligibility may be. So, again, that's next Wednesday morning, February 12th, 10:30 a.m. at the Northampton Senior Center. So, I just wanted to have a word out as well. And those are my announcements.
To follow up with that, will that be videoed by Northampton Open Media for people who can't be there?
That's a good question. We'll look into that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll look into it. We have a camera there for council and aging meetings, so we can look into that. Yeah, definitely.
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
So, next up, we have the warrants that we heard about at public comment for the March 3 elections. First up is 20.106, a warrant to establish the date, time, and location of the upcoming election for the presidential primary in the city council, February 6, 2020, upon the recommendation of city clerk Pamela L. Powers. Ordered that meetings of the members of the Democratic, Republican, Green Rainbow, and Libertarian Party in the city of Northampton qualified to vote will be held on Tuesday, March 3, 2020, in the several polling places designated for the purpose by the city council as follows. I'm going to read all the polling places. For the next warrant, I'm not going to read them again, if that's okay? So, these polling locations are for both of these elections and warrants, okay? Ward One, Precinct A in Jackson Street School Auditorium. Ward One, Precinct B in Jackson Street School Auditorium. Ward Two, Precinct A in Smith Vocational Agricultural High School. Ward Two, Precinct B in Smith Vocational Agricultural High School. Ward Three, Precinct A in the Senior Center Great Room, 67 Con Street. Ward Three, Precinct B in the Senior Center Great Room. Ward Four, Precinct A in the Senior Center Great Room. Ward Four, Precinct B in the Senior Center Great Room. Ward Five, Precinct A in the Florence Civic and Business Building at 90 Park Street. Ward Five, Precinct B in Smith Vocational Agricultural High School. Ward Six, Precinct A in Robert K. Finn Ryan Road School. Ward Six, Precinct B in Robert K. Finn Ryan Road School. Ward Seven, Precinct A in John F. Kennedy Middle School Community Room. Ward Seven, Precinct B in Leeds School Gymnasium Lower Level. The polls will be opened at 7:00 in the forenoon and closed at 8:00 in the evening of the said day. And all members will, in the wards in which they are entitled to vote between said hours, give in their votes for to the primary officers for the election of candidates of political parties for the following offices. Presidential preference, one state committee man for each political party for the Hampshire, Franklin, Worcester District; one state committee woman for each political party for the Hampshire, Franklin, and Worcester District; 35 members of the Democratic Ward Committee; 35 members of the Republican Ward Committee; 10 members of the Green Rainbow Ward Committee; and 10 members of the Libertarian Party Ward Committee. We're going to do these individually, both warrants, so.
So, I move acceptance of the warrant.
That was made, and who seconded that? Councillor Nash seconded. Any?
Pam, could you step up? Because I just, it's a simple question, but I had someone who had commented on social media that they're concerned that they were obliged to provide a stamp to return the city's census and were concerned that that was some, that might serve as an impediment for some people to remain on the voter rolls. Is it possible to also return the city's census to the clerk's office without the expense of a stamp or a stamp book, actually, more likely? I don't think anyone, they sell individual stamps, but...
I think you're asking, and I'm assuming that this individual also doesn't want to come to the city clerk's office, because that's specified on the street listing itself, postage-free if you bring it to the city clerk's office. So, what I'm assuming that they're asking for is can they return it electronically? I do get them now, so yes.
Oh, you can, it can be returned electronically as well? So, a simple scan of a PD app will be sent to you?
They just need to contain a signature, so those without signatures have to be returned.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this warrant? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, please.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayory.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinnland.
Yes.
Councillor Shera.
Yes.
And Councillor Thor.
Yes.
And Councillor Dwight.
Ah, yes.
Okay, so that passes into readings. Next is 20.17. Warrant for the, this is for the March 3, 2020 special municipal election. A warrant to establish date, time, and location of the special municipal election in the city council, February 6, 2020, upon the recommendation of city clerk Pamela L. Powers. Ordered that a special municipal election will be held in the city of Northampton on Tuesday, March 3, 2020, in the several polling locations designated for the purpose by the city council as follows, and read previously. The polls will be opened at 7:00 in the forenoon and closed at 8:00 in the evening of the said day. And all said voters in the several wards and precincts in which they are individually entitled to vote between said hours, give in their votes yes or no on the following question. Shall the city of Northampton be allowed to assess an additional $2,500,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding the operating budgets of the city and public schools for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020? Questions been made and seconded. Any discussion on this warrant? Hearing none.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayory.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinnland.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
And Councillor Foster.
Suspended. Any discussion on this warrant? Hearing none.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayory.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinnland.
Yes.
Councillor Shera.
Yes.
Councillor Thor.
Yes.
And Councillor Dwight.
Ah, yes.
Okay, so that passes into readings. Next is 20.17. Warrant for the, this is for the March 3, 2020 special municipal election. A warrant to establish date, time, and location of the special municipal election in the city council, February 6, 2020, upon the recommendation of city clerk Pamela L. Powers. Ordered that a special municipal election will be held in the city of Northampton on Tuesday, March 3, 2020, in the several polling locations designated for the purpose by the city council as follows, and read previously. The polls will be opened at 7:00 in the forenoon and closed at 8:00 in the evening of the said day. And all said voters in the several wards and precincts in which they are individually entitled to vote between said hours, give in their votes yes or no on the following question. Shall the city of Northampton be allowed to assess an additional $2,500,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding the operating budgets of the city and public schools for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020? Questions been made and seconded. Any discussion on this warrant? Hearing none.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Thor.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
And Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
That passes in two readings. Next up, we have a referral of the Charter Review Committee recommendations. So, this is, we're just going to, we can discuss the referral, we're not going to discuss the recommendations themselves. And if you'll allow me, I want to give a little bit sort of of a path forward and sort of lay out what the process is from here. Excuse me. So, I'm requesting a public hearing to be held to give the public another opportunity to weigh in on this. They had opportunities with the Charter Review Committee, but I think it's appropriate for them to have an opportunity with the city council. So, the now former chair and former vice chair, because once they submitted the report, the committee was dissolved, have said that they would be happy to come and give another presentation. I think that would be lovely and make sense since more than half the council is new. So, they have agreed that they would do that. And my hope is that the presentation will be part of a public hearing that will happen at Legislative Matters. And then, once Legislative Matters has closed that hearing, then they will vote, they will give their recommendation on the recommendations, and it will come back to council, and we will have a full deliberation of it. And then, we will vote, and what we're voting on is to authorize the mayor to request the state legislature for a special act to amend the charter. So, that's the process from this point forward. But right now, what we're doing is we're referring this to committee.
Can I speak to, in Legislative Matters, we will discuss among the committee the appropriate time to have a special meeting, hopefully, devoted to this discussion and the hearing, as opposed to embed, the next one's pretty, the next Legislative Matters meeting is going to be preloaded agenda, so to try and cram into that would be, wouldn't be right. It's also worth, I think it's appropriate to note, cram into that would be, wouldn't be right. It's also worth, I think it's appropriate to note that all the new councillors, all of them showed up for more Charter Review discussions than, say, current councillors, for the most part. So, they all get props anyway. It's, I mean, we'll be preaching to the choir, but I think it's appropriate for the public to have one more opportunity to hear and participate in the conversation, so.
What's the date on that?
Well, we, that's where we're going to try and, we're going to pick the date in Legislative Matters, when we're assembled as a body, and try to find out which one will work best for the committee and for the public.
So, is there a motion on the referral?
I have something. And I'll second it.
And this is a motion to refer to?
Legislative Matters.
We're all on the same page. Excellent. Okay, so, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Councillor Jarrett.
So, will we have an opportunity to make a motion to refer to other committees if we wish? Could you?
Do that now.
This would be...
Or that would be, that would be in that. Well, I'm not sure. I just wanted to have a discussion, because as I was looking through the charter, I was thinking about, okay, the 16-year-old voting, non-citizen voting, how would this affect the civic engagement of the community? And so, I thought, is it related, is community resources a possible place? Is the Human Rights Commission something that would be thinking about that? So, I know City Services Committee is also considering ways to engage the filling of vacancies on boards, and so, the, so this is kind of my brainstorm in terms of, is there, are there other inputs here that would be useful? And then, the, there are things that are election-related, so is the Board of Registars interested? And other things where the CPC, the school committee, the Forbes trustees, and the Oliver Smith Will, there's a change to the filling of vacancies. So, I just wanted to kind of throw out all the different multi-member bodies and committees that I thought could have some relationship or input on it. And then, I'm not suggesting that we refer to all of those, but thought it'd be useful to have a discussion about that.
Councillor Dwight, since you sat on the committee?
In fact, actually, invitations were extended to all standing committees that felt that they had thoughts and notions about the processes, including, in fact, Clerk Powers presented a couple of times before the Review Committee, you know, in, I don't know if she was speaking for all the registrars, but the fact that the City Services had an opportunity, all the councillors, all the other committees were invited, some came with, and mostly focused on some of the issues you just described, although vacancies, issues, and appointments didn't come under the aegis of the charter, so it wasn't, that really didn't come up in the course of the conversation, but, I mean, I personally have no problem with doing another invite, but a lot of that heavy lifting is, just to let you know, and you actually probably do know on some level, because as I said, you were there for quite a few of them, that a lot of that work has already been done over the course of the last year as the Charter Review Committee did its diligence, so. But I don't know, it's worth considering, so.
So, I appreciate Councillor Jarrett's question, and I actually was thinking the same thing in terms of, you know, what committees to refer things to. But I also think that the Charter Review Committee did extensive outreach. They, how many meetings did you guys have?
At least 12.
At least 12, and you moved the locations around to accommodate people, and that, I think that we don't want to, I think at this point that all of the homework has really been done, and that I think that it would be proper to send it to Legislative Matters... Matters, and, you know, and it would be another bite at the apple for people to, to weigh in before it goes to council, where they'll have another chance to, you know, weigh in, and so I think, I mean, usually when, in my mind, when we need to send things to committee, it has to do with, with, with actually doing proper outreach, but we've had 12 public meetings already, and that, and we're planning another one coming down the pike, and so I, I think, I think we're safe, but it's, it's, I, I agree with, it's a really good question to ask, and I appreciate that.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes, I wanna echo what Councilor Nash has talked about. The Charter Committee worked very, very tirelessly. Meetings after meetings, open to the public, I even went and spoke on an issue that I had concerns about. I was on the Charter Committee once before too, I think, Bill, you were with us, weren't you?
No, on the, on the first Charter?
I was on the first Charter, and it's, it's a huge process, and I think this Charter Committee really stretched out and did a tremendous amount of outreach. I really feel that we should refer this to Legislative Matters, and then I agree with Councilor Nash, that then comes to City Council, and then we talk, we talk again, and plus, if people wanna come in during open public session, they have the opportunity to do that. But thank you.
Just to add to it, actually, it's, it's appropriate for all those representative bodies to participate in the conversation if they feel so inclined in the, in the, in the public hearing. And actually, Councilor Nash made a point that I could please space as well, of course, we'll have two meetings in which, two public meetings here where we'll be discussing it as well, so. And one of the things, and actually, I'm just getting a correction now, we had 19 meetings. So it's a little more than 12. So the, in part of our frustration, actually, in the course of it, was sometimes not very well participated, not, not, not a lot of people had shown up, and I, and I certainly understood that on some level, but whatever participation we can get, in fact, actually, the, the most, and I think you, you were at the, the meeting that we did at Jackson Street School, that was the best attended, with the most amount of energy, that, that was really exciting, and that was the 11th hour meeting, that was the last meeting of the, the last large public meeting we had. If we get that again, I'll be psyched, and anything, and anything that comes out of the course of that conversation, the, there's no clock ticking necessarily, so there's not that, although there is some, I, I have a number of 16-year-olds who have expressed a certain urgency, that was long before the 11. But, but the fact is that, that, to be honest, I think this had more public vetting and participation than when we did the original exhaustive Charter change, but I'm not adverse to any, any, any more input that we can garner, and any more people that we can reach out to, and anyone who's willing to participate, I'd be really excited with that, so. And whatever mechanism we use.
Yeah, so I love, I like the, I feel comfortable with that, I feel like that, that works to just refer it to Legislative Matters, and I like the idea of the inviting committees or representatives from the committees to the public hearing, so with the, I guess that would just be if individual counselors wanted to reach out to those committees, that would be the way to go next.
We could do that, the council president could actually do that as well, yeah.
I just wanna say that, the spirit of Councilor Jarrett's proposal to include as many voices, I really respect, and yet I think what is exciting to me about the proposed Charter changes is the idea that they'll actually really expand, if adopted, opportunities for participation, and I know, I went to, I went to several of the meetings and how many opportunities there were for public input, so I definitely feel comfortable that the process was broad and inclusive, and because many of the recommendations are making municipal government even broader and more inclusive, I also feel comfortable with going to Legislative Matters, doing the public hearing, and sort of moving the process along, specifically for the reason that it has the potential to bring even more voices in.
I'll just note that, that was precisely why I wanted there to be a public hearing, there's no requirement for a hearing, and so I, I specifically wanted to have a hearing so that the council could weigh in, and any sort of combination of our subcommittees, and we would have sort of another opportunity within the council to bring the public in and have a fuller discussion, so. Okay, no further comment on this, then, all those in favor of referring the recommendations to Legislative Matters, please say aye.
Aye.
No objections, abstentions. Okay, they are referred. Next, we have the consent agenda. Reminder, we don't discuss items on the agenda unless we've requested to remove them, and then we take them individually after we vote on the consent agenda. So I'm going to read it. First up, minutes of January 7th, 2020 organizational meeting and January 16th, 2020 meeting, 19.191, appointments to the Board of Registars. This appointment received a positive recommendation from City Services on February 3rd, and that is for Catherine K. at 136 South Main Street in Florence, term of April 2019 to March 2022 to fill a vacancy. Then 20.103, these are other appointments, they also all received positive recommendations from City Services. First, to the Board of Assessors, David Murphy of 78 North Elm Street. That term is from January 2020 to June 2023. This is to fill a newly created seat. I'll just note, I have, I was asked a question about this, so this was a newly created citizen seat. The board previously had three members, but one was the principal assessor, and when the administrative order that was passed on December 5th, 2019, in that administrative order, it called for the assessor to no longer serve on the board as the third member, and that the assessor would be replaced by another citizen member. So that is what this appointment is for, this sort of, it's a newly created seat, but there had been three seats, just, this is a newly created citizen seat. And then to the Planning Board, Melissa Fowler, 87 Chesterfield Road in Leeds, January, term is January 2020 to June 2021, to fill the unexpired term of Mark Sullivan. Then, these are appointments that have yet to be referred to City Services, to the Council of Aging, Oria Aggie E. Dominich, 81 Con Street, apartment 603, term of February 2020 to June 2023 to fill a vacancy. And 20.2023, the appointment of Assistant Chief John Daven as fire chief for, and that's also being referred to City Services. Any removals?
Move on.
I will actually note, I'd like to remove the minutes of 116, please.
Just those minutes?
Just those minutes.
So I move the consent agenda, including the minutes of January 7, 2020, but minus the minutes of January 16, 2020.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Nash. Okay, no discussion, so all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Objections, abstentions. Okay, so moving to the, the minutes. I just want to make a quick amendment, because incorrectly, it says that the Disability Commission position is a liaison position, it is not, so I would like to amend that to remove the word liaison.
Ah, so moved.
Any discussion on that amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion on these minutes?
Approval of the minutes, please.
Second. Seconded by Council Quinlan. All those in favor of approving these minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Objections, abstentions. They have been approved. Okay.
So it's a full seat, is that the idea?
I'm not sure if I understood your question, but I'm gonna say sure.
Council, you said it wasn't a liaison.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I should have clarified. Yes, correct. Okay.
And I should have asked before. Thought I had a good understanding.
We are now going to recess for Finance. Laura, will you please call the roll?
Councilor Shara.
Here.
Councilor LaBarge. Councilor Quinlan.
Here.
Here.
Okay, first up, approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, so on the agenda, it shows the January 14th organizational meeting and January 16th meeting, does everyone, did everyone on Finance, were they able to see both of those minutes?
I apologize, the 14th are not there.
Okay, so.
The 14th are not there.
Just an oversight.
So we're just going to approve January 16th, please. So, was that a motion? It's a motion, seconded by Council Quinlan. All those in favor of, any discussion? All those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, they are approved, so, first up, financial orders, sorry, I'm just catching up with myself. 20.018, order to appropriate $25,000 in Whiting Street Trust Funds. Whereas Mr. Whiting Street is a successful Northampton businessman, left $25,000 to the city of Northampton in his will of 1875 with instructions that the money be used for, quote, "the relief and comfort of the worthy poor," end quote, whereas the Whiting Street Fund Committee, which was created by administrative order, issued its third annual grant application seeking proposals from local organizations with the goal of helping low-income persons in our community, and with a specific focus on helping resolve food insecurity issues in the community, whereas the Whiting Street Fund Committee received and reviewed the applications and has made its recommendations to the mayor, ordered that $25,000 be appropriated from the interest in the Whiting Street Fund, Trust Fund to the following organizations. $10,000 to Abundance Farm to support their Pick Your Own Initiative in which food insecure residents can actively participate in the life of the farm by harvesting free, organically grown fruits and vegetables. This program is conducted in collaboration with the Northampton Survival Center, and continued funding will support staff needed for the larger programming and ongoing outreach to include planting workshops, cooking demonstrations, and printed educational information in multiple languages. Abundance Farm is located on the site of the Northampton Alms House and adjoining Poor Farm, which from 1800 to 1950 served as a critical refuge for Northampton residents in need of shelter, food, and other services. And then $5,000 to the Northampton Survival Center to support their Fresh First Program, which provides an incentive for clients to come to the center every week for fresh vegetables, fruits, and bread. The Fresh Fruit, the Fresh First Program focuses on improving access to fresh produce, collaborating with local farmers, and providing healthy recipes to use local produce. The Northampton Survival Center is in its 41st year of operation as an emergency food pantry. Next, $5,000 to Grow Food Northampton, Inc., to support their incentive-based food access initiatives to provide more affordable, locally grown, healthy food for low-income residents. The funding will help support SNAP, share, Tuesday Market SNAP matching, and the Neighborhood Markets Program, bringing affordable farm stand foods to various locations, including the Senior Center, three housing communities, and, and three elementary schools. $5,000 to Salvation Army's Northampton Service Unit to support emergency-based food needs. The local unit provides food vouchers for local grocery stores, food bags, and disaster support in conjunction with other local service agencies. They provide, quote, "last resort," end quote, "resources" for those who may not qualify for other types of assistance. The Salvation Army has worked in Northampton for over 60 years and has been in existence since 1865, meeting basic human needs. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
I can't second it.
No.
I'm sorry.
Is there someone on Finance who will second the motion?
Second.
Just the one me.
This time.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Mayor.
I think the, I think the word is pretty self-explanatory, for the council's work around, you know, three years ago. We, we had this Whiting Street Fund for many, many years. Access to it was sometimes not easily and well-known about, and the process that we had previously was not always very clear, so we decided to sort of revamp it, working with that committee, so we essentially set it up as sort of a grant program to work with local agencies that do serve the worthy poor. And so every year, the treasurer makes a recommendation about how much interest has created, if it's used, if the principal can't touch, and then we ask the Whiting Street Committee to basically conduct an RFP process, they evaluate the grants, and then they make recommendations, which ultimately require appropriation from the City Council. These are the recommendations this year. I will note, if someone may be concerned about the absence of manna, they actually did not apply this year, so they, they, they have been part of this the last few years. So, so this is the complete set of recommendations, and obviously, I thank the Whiting Street Fund Committee for their work in, in helping us make sure that Mr. Street's funds actually do get out to serve those most in need in our community.
Thank you. Penny, Councilor LaBarge.
Mayor, I got called Susan today to talk about the Whiting Street Fund, and I wanna thank you again, because I think by changing the way we did it before, this was excellent. You know, we are looking at our families here in the city, of giving them proper food to eat and everything, it's just wonderful. But I had Susan today, in regards to $25,000 way back in the 1800s, it's never been mentioned about how much money do we actually have in the Whiting Fund, and she said about $300,000? That's amazing.
Yeah, yeah, and again, this, he gave a gift of principle to several communities up and down the Pioneer Valley. Word is he accepted one community, I forget which one it was.
Yeah, he didn't let us.
I think actually some young kids threw rocks at his buggy or something. So, but yes, it's, there were not even, the challenge we had before was, often people would come to us, and we had this committee of volunteers, who were, we had individuals who came to us with individual cases, which was very hard for a public body to confidentially evaluate and try to understand, you know, folks, and so it was just, it was a really challenging process, so we worked, we have so many of these great nonprofits, who, that's their job is to work with, you know, low-income folks, so we just think this is a much better model, and, you know, they've been using food security as, as sort of the theme for the last several years, but obviously, they may, they have the option to choose other themes as well, but that's one that they, they've seen such a great response from, so again, I commend the committee, and obviously, one of your colleagues is a former member of the committee, so.
Can I speak on that a little bit? Working on the Whiting Street Fund Committee the last two and a half years was very rewarding work, it's wonderful to spend someone else's money, but, you know, and, and specifically on food insecurity issues, we did discuss whether it should be fuel or housing or something like that, and every year, it just came back to food as being the most, the most basic and essential need, so we settled on that each of the last three years. So this year, I was part of the committee when we decided what the, what the, you know, use would be, but then I was stepped down from the committee when I joined this committee. But I wanted to just mention that when I saw this on the, on the agenda, I was really excited, because this has been, like I said, very rewarding work. I have a ton of respect for Rabbi Jacob Fine at Abundance Farm, they're doing incredible work, that $10,000 I'm sure will be well-used. I was thrilled with Grow Food Northampton, again, the outreach is amazing, and the Survival Center, in the words of our former Mary Claire Higgins, she says, you know, the Survival Center, they're walking the last mile to serving people in real need, and I think that that really resonated with me, it meant a lot the way she put it. I was disheartened when I saw the Salvation Army, I really had a hard time. They have a checkered past with the LGBTQT community, and I was really, when I saw Tuesday night, I saw pretty late, couldn't really sleep right away, and so the last 36 hours, I've, I've reached out to a few people that I know and asked them what they think, just tell me what you think about this, and, you know, one friend said, well, we give to the Salvation Army because we believe in their work. She said, we give four big lesbian thumbs up to the Salvation Army. And another friend, and I spoke at length today, and he said, you know, it's amazing how much good they do, and I think since it's a trust fund that the city manages, I'm okay with it, and I think you should feel really good about it, however, if it was my tax dollars, I might feel differently. So I thought about that some, and I'm, you know, I'm thrilled to support this, all of it, every bit of it, but, but I just. But, but I just wanted to voice that, because, again, it was something that really occurred to me as part of our welcoming community, who we are. It needed to be addressed, I felt. So, thank you.
Thank you for your thoughtfulness and your work on the Whiting Street.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Jarrett.
I just wanted to say I've heard from several Metta Brook residents about the Thursday Neighborhood Market that Grow Food Northampton does and how, how much they appreciate that. So, I'm glad we're supporting that.
Anyone else? So, all those in favor of positive recommendations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? No questions. Okay, so, moving on, twenty point zero one nine, in order to reprogram $7,500 from CS Energy Management System to Senior Center Energy Control Upgrades. Ordered that $7,500 of surplus funds remaining in the CS Fire Energy Management Systems project be reprogrammed for a new project to make energy control upgrades to the Senior Center.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made. And.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Mayor?
So, the, as it's described, it was a central services capital project at the fire station, at the main fire station headquarters, and it was to do some needed upgrades to some of their energy management. At the Senior Center to make similar upgrades with some of the controls and switches of their HVAC syst, HVAC systems. They're seeking to reprogram those remaining monies from that project to be allowed to be used for similar work at the Senior Center. So, that's essentially what it is.
Any comments or discussion? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? No questions? Okay. Next up is twenty point zero two zero, in order to authorize NPS, Northampton Public Schools, to enter MOU, Memo of Understanding, for Every Student Succeeds Act. Ordered that, whereas, the School Department wishes to enter into an agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Health of Human, Health, Executive Office of Health and Human Services, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and Department of Children and Families to allow participation in the Title IV-E claiming of transportation expenditures for children in foster care. Whereas, the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, promotes education stability by allowing a student the right to continue to attend the school in which they were enrolled at the time of their placement in foster care, unless it is determined not to be in the student's best interest. Therefore, pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter 44, Master General Law, Section 70, the city, by the vote of its city council, authorizes the Northampton School Committee as the local education agency with the approval of the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding for the purposes Title IV-E reimbursement. Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Discussion.
So, this is actually a new program that, that DESI has developed, that's Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as it says in the order, working with DCF and with the Executive Office of Health and Human Services. Councils, some councilors may remember or be reminded of the McKinney-Vento Program, which we sometimes come to you for, which is for homeless transportation. And so, if a child is homeless and is sheltered in one community, we provide transportation back to their home school so that they can remain in their home district, and the McKinney-Vento Program pays that. This is a new program that's sort of a corollary to that for foster children. So, if a child, you know, from Northampton was placed in foster care in another community, they would, they have the right to be transported back to Northampton to continue their education in Northampton. So, this would provide a funding stream for limited reimbursement to, to districts to help pay for that transportation, very similar to the McKinney-Vento Program. But one of the conditions of it is we have to enter into an MOU with, with EOHS and DESI and the Department of Children and Families. And the way the regulations read is that the local governing body, the city council and the mayor, have to authorize the local education authority, which, i.e. the Northampton Public Schools, to actually enter into that MOU. So, you're basically voting to allow NPS to enter into this MOU so they can participate in this foster care reimbursement program.
Just a question, would the school committee also have to hold on this as well?
We've already discussed it, and we're aware of it, so I'm fairly certain we would also take a vote. I think we're timing it so after this authorization, we'll authorize the superintendent to, to enter into it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this important program we're thankful for? No? Okay, so, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Sentences? Okay. And last is twenty point zero twenty-one, in order to appropriate free cash to NPS, Northampton Public Schools for E-Rate. Whereas, the E-Rate Program is the name for the Schools and Libraries Program of the Universal Service Fund, which is administered by the Universal Service Administrative Company under the direction of the Federal Communications Commission, FCC. The program provides discounts to assist schools in the U.S., in the U.S., obtain affordable telecommunications and internet access. Whereas, the city has received $51,834.60 for FY 2020 E-Rate Funds allocated to the Northampton Public Schools, and the mechanism to make these funds available to the schools immediately requires an appropriation from free cash. Ordered that $51,834.60 be appropriated from the FY 2020 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash to the Northampton Public Schools equivalent to the E-Rate reimbursement received by the city for the benefit of the School Department to improve and expand technology connectivity. Is there a motion? Motion, Counselor LaBarge. A second. Seconded by Counselor Quinlan. Discussion.
So, E-Rate is a, has been a longstanding program, and it's the way that most of schools, any schools, both at the secondary level and also our public schools, receive funding for telecommunications service, actually, internet service. And so, you, you may or may not know it, but on all of our phone bills, there's a small fee that's collected, and that money is compiled, and then it is actually distributed by a nonprofit designated by the FCC, this USAC, and it comes back to school. So, that actually normally happens every year, and the schools get that money on sort of a formula basis. This was a special grant program through the same USAC, and it was a grant basically for a set amount of money to do some replacement of old technology equipment in classrooms that had, that needed replacement, to provide teachers with newer AV and interactive technology, and to replace networking equipment that had not been able to be replaced within their current budget. So, normally, the monies go straight to the schools. Under this program, they actually flowed to the city as a, as sort of an undesigned revenue, so, much like the McKinney-Vento monies that also does that. In order for us to get the money to the schools, we basically have to appropriate it out of our undesigned fund balance back to the schools. So, we're basically, you know, we're sort of the bridge between that grant and then the money actually getting to the schools. So, the money was received by the city. Because it wasn't a budgeted revenue with the city, it's part of our undesigned funds, and so, we're basically asking you to appropriate it from undesigned funds directly to the schools.
Okay.
So, it's not city money. We're basically acting as the pass-through for this grant program for the schools, much like we do with the McKinney-Vento and similar grant programs.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I don't have any new business. Is there a motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned and magically back here. Where we're going to go through these financial orders. So, first one is twenty point zero one eight, order to appropriate $25,000 in Whiting Street Trust Funds. Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded by Counselor Jarrett. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Mayory. Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge.
Yes. That passes in first reading. Next is twenty point zero one nine, in order to reprogram $7,500 from CS Energy Management System to Senior Center Energy Control Upgrades.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded by Counselor Thorpe.
You made the buzzer.
Any discussion on this financial order? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Mayory.
Yes. That passes in first reading. Next is twenty point zero twenty, in order to authorize Northampton Public Schools to enter a memorandum of understanding for Every Student Succeeds Act.
Move to approve, please.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Any discussion? Counselor Foster.
Yeah, I'm still forming my thoughts, and I didn't expect it would be a financial order to hit me as strongly as it did. But I just think that this is amazing. Several years ago, my family served as a temporary foster care placement for a fourth grader, and one of the reasons we did is that we had the ability to transport her to her home school every day. And I saw firsthand, for about six weeks, how difficult it was for her to be in a temporary placement. But being able to be at her home school and have that stability every day was one piece of the puzzle that helped her through that really difficult time. And to see this, it sort of just always brings it back that this is real people's lives, that this work touches, and I'm glad to see this on the agenda and, you know, glad that, glad that this is moving forward.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Yes.
That passes in first reading. Next up is twenty point zero two one, in order to appropriate free cash to Northampton Public Schools for E-Rate.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Any discussion on this order? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
That also passes in first reading. We're now moving on to financial orders that are on their second reading. We have the four that were the CPA fund appropriations, so that.
They move them as a group.
Thought you might. So. So, let me read their titles first and then we'll see about that. In order to appropriate CPA funds for historic conservation of the Land of Shepherd Barn, twenty point zero oh nine, in order to appropriate CPA funds for affordable home on Glendale Road, twenty point zero one zero, in order to appropriate CPA funds to community builders for North Commons Project, and twenty point zero one one, in order to appropriate CPA funds to NHA for Hampshire Heights Playground. There has been a motion to move them as a group. Was there a second? It's been seconded. Any discussion on moving them as a group? All those in favor of moving them as a group, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, I need to move.
Move them as a group.
All right. Maybe that was. Okay. Here we are again. Counselor Quinlan on that one. Okay. We're going to move these as a group, that's clear. Any discussion on this group? Roll call, please.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. Next is twenty point. I know, I'm going to have it in my list. Twenty point zero one two, in order to set date and time of the 2020-2021 City Council Meeting. This is a second reading. The first reading passed on, was on January 7th. It was inadvertently left off our last agenda, yet we all came here today, so.
Good sign so far, yeah.
So, we're going to take, I'm going to look for a motion for us to take a second vote on our calendar.
So, move.
Second. It's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the second reading of the 2020-21 City Council Meeting Calendar?
As a point of clarification from last, last time, I think, I think I would bring this up actually after, at the new, either new business or study requests about looking into changing the meeting time. Would that be the appropriate time to? So, maybe we pass it and then we reflect on it later with a, is that?
Yes, so, committee study requests come from the council president?
Oh, okay. I just saw it on the agenda.
Yes, it always is there. It's sort of held there.
Yeah.
But we could certainly talk about that.
Yeah, I just didn't, right, so we talk about it during that time in the agenda?
If it were on the agenda.
If it were on the agenda. Oh, I see.
Yeah.
It's not, I see, okay.
Okay.
Yes, I understand.
Get it on the agenda.
Right, gotcha. That's what I'm hearing.
We can talk about me putting it on the agenda, because a committee study request comes from the council president.
Right, gotcha.
Okay. We have a motion on this, yes?
Yes, several.
Any other discussion on our calendar? Nope. Roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. You will come.
Oh, I just, while we were clarifying, so is new business also a council president?
No.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay. That passes in first reading. Next up is 20.021, in order to appropriate free cash to Northampton Public Schools for E-Rate.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Any discussion on this order?
Seeing none.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thor.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay. That passes in second reading. There are no information requests or committee study requests that are on this agenda. I don't have any new business.
Move adjourn.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor of adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Are you sitting?